Call this regular meeting in the Nevada City Council. Can we get a roll call please?
Brian Hampton.
Here.
Bart Lemon. Dane Nielsen. Jason Nashman.
Here.
Steve Guy.
Here.
Sandy, Eric.
Here.
Bart did notify us that she will not be here this evening. So first item is approval of the agenda.
Motion for.
Second. Andy and Steve. Any discussion? Any none? Council please vote. Hey. The agenda is approved for six public hearing. First public hearing is proposal to sell certain property located within the amended and restated urban renewal area. Lot two of airport road class six subdivision except the public highway easement. We'll open the public hearing. Do we receive any written or oral comment? Then is anyone here to speak in the public hearing regarding the sale of property airport route? Any none will close the public hearing which moves us to resolution number twenty, twenty twenty two, twenty twenty three. A resolution setting requirements for the sale of certain property located within the amended and restated urban renewal area. Determining if proposals submitted by a potential purchaser satisfied the requirements and depend the intent of the city to accept the proposed. The proposal proposed in the event that no competing proposals are submitted and so let's name competing proposals.
Motion for a second.
Do you think any discussion? Any none? Council please vote. That is approved, which takes us to A. August twenty twenty two urban renewal plan amendment will open the public hearing on proposed amendment to the Nevada urban renewal area. Did you receive any written or oral comment? Any none? And you will, is there anyone here to speak in the public hearing regarding urban renewal area? Do we speak now or at three? Yeah, we'll decide to go to the microphone and provide your name and address.
Scott Henry here with the Nevada Urban LLC. Self along with the ATI group. Please here are looking to do a housing development up on the north side of town there. We're excited about the opportunity to work on a project that we think is a need for the community. Our role with committee economic development commission has allowed us to see some housing studies and things like that. So we look forward to kind of work through finding more housing and portable housing. A level that's a little bit different than some of the other options available today. That's our goal. We're here to generate questions or any overview. Castle, the castle they have.
Thank you. Is there anyone here to speak in the public hearing? And then seeing them will close the public hearing which moves to resolution. Resolution number twenty one, twenty twenty two, twenty twenty three, a resolution to declare necessity in establishing urban renewal area pursuant to section four, three point four. Of the code of bio and approve urban renewal plan amendment for the Nevada urban renewal area. Who do we? Second. Brian, Andy, discussion? Any none? Council please vote. Okay, that is approved, which takes us to resolution number twenty two, twenty twenty two, twenty twenty three, a resolution authorizing development agreement with Nevada. Element LLC.
Motion for a second.
Sandy, Dane, discussion?
Want me to start? I think everyone got my email right that sent out my concerns. Another, you know, a couple of those concerns and I'm all for housing and it's awesome that Henry's want to. Do it else he wants to do this. I just have concern about payback. You know? The, we have some numbers that, you know, the Jordan got for us, which I asked for. Yeah, Karen, whoever, thank you, Karen. Aaron, whoever did it. My concern is many concerns, payback. We've never paid for infrastructure as far as I know. We've never paid for infrastructure for any development ever in the Bay. So are we setting a precedent that any developments from now on is to pay for it? And what about the guys in the bar to make? No, what kind of, I mean, are they going to come and say, well, you're going to pay us back? You know, I think we have to learn and think about that. The. Where's, how we get a budget and money and Jordan did tell me we have a pool of money for that. I don't know that it's a good idea to spend all that cool and we can use it for infrastructure. I'm not saying that don't help, don't do anything with this. But I don't know that we as the city should fit the bill for all the infrastructure. We. We have all the risk here. You know, it says in there fourteen houses. I know they have to show me, but let's just be the devil's advocate. Let's say they only build fourteen houses. There's nothing in any agreements that says that they have to build more than fourteen. They can build fourteen and be done. They built fourteen houses. We probably have a lot of forty. To fifty year payback. Forty years payback. My mind might be off a little bit, but. I'm just a little concerned. There's just too many red flags to me in this agreement. We're on the hope for a lift station and we need a lift station down. We've agreed to help with lift stations other. I think we should still help with the lift station if they get built. But I don't know that we go in and build all the streets, build all the infrastructure. I mean, there's language in there. If we have to buy, if they have to buy more easement. Or they have to purchase other land for something else, we have to pay for that. That's written in there. I just think that we're a little too vague. I'm not saying throw away, not at all, Scott. I don't want, I don't want you to think that. I just think we bear all the risk here. All of it. I mean, granted, they have risks of building a wheelhouse and they got to solve. I shouldn't say all of it, but when it comes to our infrastructure. I just think we need to look at redoing the agreement a little bit different. How that is, I don't know. But I've only added my hands for twelve weeks. You said two maybe weeks ago. I just, I've read it and I read it again. I've read it about twenty times this last weekend. And it just. I don't want to say bothers me. It just, it's not. I don't necessarily know if it's thorough. I don't know if that's. And I don't know if anyone else agrees with me. That might be washed up, but. And I love the idea that we'll have some form of deposit because I don't think we have very much of that right. But I don't think, what cost did we build for? Or help? I mean, I'm not saying we shouldn't help absolutely. Because I don't want. Last thing I want is you guys to walk away from this. Because it's a big, it's a big deal. But I also think we have to do this right for our taxpayers. Do the taxpayers pay for a lot of this for the next twenty, thirty years? Like I said, I know that they'll build. I want to believe that they'll build more than fourteen houses, but. Agreements talk. You know, I could tell you I'm going to do all kinds of things and not do it. I would say the history that Scott and his family have had. They haven't burnt anybody, you know, they kept their word on their developments and they did before. But I don't think you can go into it with a handshake or a verbal, yeah, that's okay, because we got burnt on a few things the last few years doing that. So we have to back try to backtrack. And we don't need to live all those, but. I just think we need to do a little more due diligence and I think we can do it quick, quick enough that it hopefully doesn't slow these guys down on plans. And this steps apart.
I would say that, yes, this is completely different than something that we've done in the past, but. And I could be wrong because I've only been here for a few years, but. We've had three housing studies done and we're showing we need two hundred and fifty six portable housing. And one of the reasons. For the infrastructure deals, so we can actually provide people for a little house. As of right now, it's. Now the housing that we can get, it's, it's nice housing. It's expensive housing, not everybody for that massive.
Well, and I don't disagree with that. My whole point is I don't know that you would need Brett saying the office to pay taxes. You can be paid from someone else's. Someone else's fee. And that's really the way it boils down to. We're upside down on payback. You know, the only way we have. The only way you have to make revenue is taxes and selling water and soup. So we really have to look at that, say, how long to pay us back to pay back? What we put into it. I mean, we do the street projects. We do it with, you know, the main street thing where the funds coming for doing main street project. You know, we've helped ever as many as we can on main street project by giving them money, but as far as I know, we haven't been a hundred percent in any of those habits. No.
I'll leave it.
And I'm still not, like I said, I'm, I don't want anyone to think I'm against. I just said we have to be. I don't know frugal is the word. We have to be financially responsible with taxpayers on what we spent. And, and if we have. If we have that pool of money that we can use for infrastructure. Is it fair to everybody else in town that we spend it all on one development and rather than. Using some of it for the development, but then using some to fix some infrastructure somewhere else in town and means that we would have to put off. Because we don't have the money. That's where I'm at. I know that we have that pool of money. I'm worried about now, but that's my, still my thought on that. You know, do we, do we change the one point five to one and use five hundred thousand for another project? And, and I don't know that, but it's just part of my, part of my thought process that. Don't, don't spend it all in one place when we could do a lot of different things. This being one is a good thing. But still be able to do some more. Or incentivize more houses rather than the fourteen. Because like I said, I, I don't want to think that they're going to put it fourteen, but they could. According to this agreement, if they build fourteen, they could be done forever. Good houses. Do we need to change the structure to incentivize more houses they build, the more payback? They pay better. Because I'm pretty sure that's all down with the government. And I didn't go back and read through them. I mean, I'm not, I say, went back and read through every development here. We learned about this, you know, that's not true, but. So I don't know if we need to pump the brakes on this and. You know, get a little more into that. And I, and I know the development, maybe you guys have done a lot of work on it, but.
But I'm remembering right, the one that maybe covers just the infrastructure for the search for. One million covered the infrastructure at the time would be based on fourteen houses that are. That would be built. But it's only real costs, right? I believe it's long enough to check. So if they were to.
Proration as suspended or at basis.
They weren't building more houses after the baseball. All that infrastructure is not.
Correct. We haven't discussed anything for the subdivision. I just, we just talked about this and then following that. If this is something that we will be doing this morning, we'll be in on that.
So if we were to. Pull back some money. That's going to have to get absorbed into the price of the house, correct Scott? Fourteen houses, pull back five hundred dollars, that's fifty more dollars.
Well, I, I believe they can correct me if I'm wrong, but they're planning for the whole thirty three houses for that.
They would have to speak on that. So this one point five, they didn't put in the infrastructure, thirty three houses or four?
Your agreement? See, I'm sorry, but I can, I can just. You want to go?
Yeah. Yeah, I just saw you going online.
Yeah. B J Stokesbury with ATI group. I'm actually from Nevada foreign race here as well. So ATI group just a little bit about us for real estate development, basically. We do a lot of land development, primarily residential throughout the metro area. For Dodge as well. And so I, I want to, I, I think you bring up great points and that's, that's why you guys are here. So I want to thank you guys for considering this and, and ask this a tough question. So, so a few, a few things I just want to kind of talk about in general is, is. The incentive and kind of doing something that you haven't done before. It does set a precedent for every other developer that line. And I can give you an example. So in, in Pellet, we've done, we did a development called Prairie Ridge. So we just developed that, finished lots and Earth is in spring of last year. So we actually developed ninety four lots in the town of Harsole. And we worked with the, the city and the county to put a package together. It was four point seven million dollars and it covers just the, I'll kind of give you that, but it covers just the public infrastructure. So it's only qualified costs. So as a city, you're not actually able to give us money outside of qualified costs. And I said it's a little bit of a group. So, so in Pellet, so they, they did something they've never done before. They've done tip rebates, right? Where you go and build and they just spend their homes get built, get the rebates as you go. And that is, it works for, for kind of that higher end, you know, right now it's five hundred thousand plus. It, it works because you're getting that, the developers are getting that over time. And so when we look at a portable housing, which is what Prairie Ridge was, we got the money upfront and that went towards qualified public infrastructure. So, so when we talk about public infrastructure, that is the roads, the sewer, everything that would be, you know, dedicated back to the city after work done, just like any other zone you have. That is infrastructure that you guys own, it's cities. So those are, those are the only qualified costs and if. We are asking, so we have, you know, probable costs that you guys have seen in the development agreement. That is an opinion from our engineer of what it's going to cost for just the public infrastructure. So that's the road, it's grading just for the streets, it's sewer. And it's kind of all labeled out there. And I think we're at one point eight million right now. And obviously you guys know it's all the time. It's, it is crazy bidding things right now. It's crazy painting things. So, so that is our opinion. So whether that comes in at two million, one point six, one point five. You guys are, I guess, under the development agreement right now. You guys would be approving how it's kind of right now is one point five. And one million of that is, is essentially part of the agreement. The first two grants and the, the, the last five hundred thousand be only we, we have to build that fourteen, those fourteen homes within five years. So it's a cost and then at one million for us, so the public, the qualified public infrastructure cost coming in a million, you're only paying a million. We don't hear one point five. You, you technically it's not legal. It's not a part of the development agreement. So, so if, if we, right now we're estimating, and I mean, kind of when we started this whole process, it was one point five and that's kind of the reason for the number one point eight. We're sticking with our one point five. But then beyond that, we have, we have costs that are not reimbursable, reimbursable by, by the city. So we have private utilities, you know, gas, electric. We have grading for the lot itself, not for public infrastructure. Financing costs, interest, the land. So, so there's, there's a cost, I guess. While, while we are asking for a large percentage of the public infrastructure, it's not a hundred percent of the, of all of ours. It's really, it's, it's, we, we have many other costs kind of above that. So. I guess I kind of spewed a lot there. Any questions kind of on what we're asking for? So I'll go back to, so Prairie Ridge. So we, we got, so as for portable housing, our lot cost went from, you know, eighty thousand or, or sale price of eighty thousand. Then with the buy down went to, or on average about forty or forty five thousand per lot of across the board, ninety five, ninety four lots. And that is all passed along right to the buyer, right? So that's, that's taking, you know, forty grand of, of just home costs that that buyer would have to pay for. So it's all getting passed on to the sewer. And then we are, and there's, there's other developers doing projects and pulling out to, or bringing another, another project forward. That is, it's, it's not eligible for money upfront because it's, it's not geared towards workforce housing. So I think that's a key designation here is we're, we're targeting that workforce housing that, you know, detached single family home that is kind of that, that first time home buyer and not your, your home trade housing. And I think, you know, as, as we look at housing studies and everything, that is, that's the key. And I think that, you know, if you look at it from a city standpoint, we are targeting workforce housing. And so.
About one, I mean, is that covered the thirty three houses or just?
Yeah. So, so we, as we look at this, everything is for the infrastructure. So it's just going out there and building last and, and the road and everything to where, you know, you could go out there and you could build a house. So as we look at it, it's, it's just infrastructure. And then there's, there's the one, the one component of the fourteen houses, which we just have to, we have to have fourteen homes built for us to trigger that for grant distribution. And that's, and it's not, the, the five hundred thousand doesn't go towards the, as far as I understand it, doesn't go towards the, the cost of the home being built. It's all for the. All for the, so, so. You know, we, we have the fourteen homes is our target to, to get that, that third grant distribution. But beyond that, I mean, it doesn't, you know, we're, this is obviously our, our job day to day. So we, it does not incent us to stop at fourteen. If we've only sold fourteen homes or fourteen lots, we're losing money. It's not a good project for us. Like that is a bad deal for us. So we are incented to go out, build thirty three homes, move on a base two as quick as possible. It, it is not, it's not good for us to sell fourteen lots or.
So the, the answer to that is yes, thirty three lots.
Yeah.
Oh, what do you guys, start going to say one, build thirty three houses?
Yeah. So, yeah, sorry. So what we'll do is we'll go out and we'll build thirty three lots so we can, we can go sell in thirty three lots. We can have a potential gold bill.
So you guys. Can we approve this? Do you have a estimated cost of a lot?
Yeah. So, so I, I would say right now we have not gotten into hardcore design, right? So we have a concept. We have an idea of what it's going to cost. And I say we're, we're targeting kind of forty five to fifty, fifty five is kind of our ideal for a lot. So there's a lot of barriers and yeah, yeah. I'd say forty five to fifty five and, and I really want. We can get there. Yeah. As we talk to builders, so we have relationships with a lot of builders. You know, wants that build here in town already in Ames, in the metro area. And I think people are pretty excited. They see what's happening here. They see that there's jobs, there's. And, and when there's a, when you look at interest rates rising, if you look at things like small town, I think having. When there's, when there's pent up demand, I think that helps just drive builders here to, to want to go put up a stack home. Because I think there's, you know, if you put up a stack home in AP or a stack home here, there's a demand here. So I think it just makes it more attractive here. So. Do you think that, you know, there's, it's kind of, we're teed up and, and I know we've been working for a little bit here, but I think. It's going to go well.
I have kind of an engineering question. How confident are we that this won't need a lift station? I know we started with, we were going to probably pay the lift station and now we're moving that same pot of money to the pipes basically instead. So. I guess that would be my question.
Can you answer that basically? You may be the bottom.
Oh, I was asking how confident are we that, that that first bay is that thirty three homes would not need a lift station?
There's a certain amount of it that we know does not need to be. And where there's a question mark. You may need to do some things like do a slab on grade would be the simplest thing. Or somehow gain a couple of feet by putting a shorter basement in, open a nine foot basement, make it eight foot. Get that first floor up about another foot. It just makes the driveway steeper. That kind of the best scenario is just moving the elevation out the for down. Or up in this case. We couldn't tell. All, all we had were, you know, rough elevations with the site, but. I don't know. I can't answer questions. I know that there are about ten lots that. Might need to be adjusted. The bulk of the subdivision should be able to be served by an existence.
That's nice. I need to confirm.
There may need to be just some slab on bricks would be the special.
I have a question.
And we restructure the deal then to remove the lift station. It is possible to adjust the whole of it?
Well, I think they push for a lift station. Either.
But no. Well, we have, yeah, so the contract, basically how it's written is if there is a determination whether it needs to be a lift station, then. We will hire an outside engineering firm, which will be split between both parties to determine if that is necessary or not. And it doesn't say anything on whose responsibility is to pay.
I think. But you know, if it's, if it's slab on grade or brighter pumps in basements, I think, I think we can get around it. If it's truly where we just can't. Then that's going to be, I think, you know, if we can, if I think it's structured now where, you know, it's, it's kind of Vegas, we pay for it because now. If, if we can get down there and we realize, okay, we can't develop half of this thing, then there'll be real kind of discussions. But I think right now, kind of analysis of everything, we could do slab on grade or brighter pumps. Should not.
Any final questions unless there are burning questions that the video still had and wanted to vote? Would that council please vote? Okay, we agree with you. Which moves us to. The public hearing, see rezoned properties, forty south nineteenth street will open that public hearing. Did we receive any written or oral comments? Is there anyone here to speak in the public hearing regarding South nineteenth?
Hey guys, sorry. Thanks guys.
Yeah, thank you.
Yes.
Goodbye. Hard to get at, but. Okay, thanks. One here in that public hearing. So we'll close that and the ordinance number ten, twenty nine, twenty twenty two, twenty twenty three. Northern submitting the zoning map of the city of Nevada, Iowa, by reasoning the property at six forty south nineteen street. A from A R Agriculture Residential Reserve District, R four, multiple family dwelling district first ring. Second. Dane, any discussion? Any none? Council please vote. That is approved. Which takes us to the consent agenda and any editing for separate consideration?
Motion for a vote.
Basically. Discussion on consent? Seeing none, council please vote. That is approved. Which takes us to appointments. We have a library for the appointment for them later. That, Brian and Green. I will say we had a lot of very qualified applicants and. Which is good is now we have them in our file for speech report and permission building. So a lot of people have been serving. Council please vote. That is approved. Now Marlon's is here because he has a proclamation that I will try to scroll through real quick. For water wastewater workers' week. I'm wanting to proclaim that in the city and thank our vote, water and wastewater departments for everything they do. So. It says, I brought Bart from here for Nevada, city of Nevada, Iowa, do you hear about proclaim August twenty first, twenty seven, twenty twenty two to be water and wastewater workers' week? In the city of Nevada and all residents join and recognize our workers for their service and valuable role, clean water, play in our community. Marlon wants a photo out.
You.
Dan. I don't know that we have anything printed out.
Okay.
You can just take a photo.
One. One, ready, here, two guys. Oh, hi. Hi.
Where do you want us?
Right here, it's fine. Just put one on each side of you.
That's good.
Okay. Okay? You know me, guys, it's not over yet. Smile, Harold. All right.
Sorry, yeah.
Okay.
Is there anyone else here to speak in the public forum? I think I'm seeing stars come out of this platform. Oh, never mind, I do have a comment, sorry, Tristan.
Yeah, that's okay. I'm Teresa Albertson, I'm with the Ames Tribune, I cover local government, crimes and courts, hopefully crimes and courts will not be involving me at all. And I just wanted to introduce myself, I think you might just as far away, Brett, if you can, for the work on the story we had last week, that was a quick response. I'm sure we can meet that, but I look forward to getting to know you all. I'm an Ames native, raised my kids here, been around a long time, so, welcome to meet you all. Thanks.
Thank you. With that, we will close the public forum, moving into old business. A ordinance number ten twenty-three, twenty-two, twenty-three, northern cementing, the city code of Nevada, Iowa, by adding chapter one fifty-eight, property maintenance and residential rental code, third and final reading. Keenan, Jason, racing for that. Any discussion? Council please vote. That is approved. Takes us to B, group pair request number two for the field house project from H T C LLC in the amount of hundred and thirty thousand eight hundred eighty-nine dollars and ten cents. Second, Damon Sand, any discussion? None, council please vote. That's approved. Um, basis to C, resolution number twenty-six, twenty-two, twenty-three, resolution approving the Iowa V O T agreement for the primary road project. With the group, second, it's Brian, discussion. None, council please vote. Who takes us to D, group change order number one for the twenty-two street improvement project from Anax in the amount of hundred and sixty-five thousand four hundred and three dollars and twenty cents. You do, bro. Second, Steve, Dane, discussion. See, none, council please vote. Approved. Takes us E, ordinance number ten thirty, twenty-two, twenty-three, northern cementing provisions pertaining to sewer use charges, chapter ninety-nine, first reading. Two, three. Brian, Jason, discussion. Seeing none, council please vote. It is approved, which goes to new business A, resolution number twenty-seven, twenty-two, twenty-three, resolution that fixes date for a public hearing on proposal to enter into a sooner revenue loan and disbursement agreement and to borrow money they're under in a principal amount, not to see eighteen million five hundred thousand. Okay, I'm sorry, it's me, Jason. Any discussion? Seeing none, council please vote. That's approved. Takes us through B, that approved purchase of sprayer spreader for the parks department. All the group, second, it's me, Dane, opens up discussion. For team, got, got sprays, if you have any questions? See, none, council please vote. It's approved, or takes us to C, a purchase of vehicle for the police department. Move to approve. Second, Dane, Brian, discussion. Sergeant, any suggestions?
What's the timeframe of this, actually, hearing, why?
So I'm checking with them about, hopefully, the, the last action thing we had in January, they thought they'd have it March, April, that shipment is still not here yet. Uh, the one that, hopefully, you get through tonight, is on that same shipment, so we'll get hold from that same time. She emailed me Thursday, she still doesn't have a timeframe. The shipping delays that everybody else is having, so.
So, if there, if we approve the twenty-twenty-two, if they, uh, if they can't get us the twenty-twenty-two, are we gonna have to pay more for the twenty-three? Or they are the twenty-two, right?
So they have a shipment of twenty-twenty-two, reserved for a car Chevrolet. It's just a matter of when they get delivered. Uh, when I spoke with them in November, I believe they had seventy-six that were slated to come to them. And they have two that were reserved for Nevada P U B, uh, one for the last fiscal year, and if we decide to buy it this fiscal year. So, an order from almost a year ago is still the fastest thing that I think we could get. Why a taco, seven explorer, we have more explorer, we currently have all explorers right now, up at Chusa, Crown Vic. I, I've been a proponent for tacos for a while, however, the cost didn't add up, tacos were more expensive than explorers. But explorers have actually caught up to the cost of tacos, so they're very similar, all a couple thousand dollar difference. Uh, I'm a proponent for tacos, which was the fuel efficient team, uh, our explorers run as all-wheel-drive, one-four-seven, year-round. All the taco has the two-wheel, four-wheel option, so eight or nine months out of the year, I expect to have better gas mileage, and then the couple months of the four-wheel drive, it'll probably be about the same gas mileage. And then tacos have a higher resale down the road. Um, they can't give me exact dollar amounts, but, uh, the action form I did in January, I compared the same model year tacos versus model year explorers, and they're six to twelve thousand dollars higher on resale, so about five thousand extra, I think. As long as everything lines up with that resale, right? Yes. There, there's other factors that are, are reasons why I want to go to taco size, they're much bigger, they have a shorter turning radius, uh, it's running at the same engine, chassis, and frame as a Solado, so you're, you're toward in the power to five-three or still on six that we have with these doors.
In order to step in, council please vote. That is approved, which takes us to D, resolution number twenty-eight, twenty-two, twenty-three, resolution preparing intent to provide economic development support to development project at eleven oh five, Sixth Streets, Meet One Oh One. Second, Ryan, Dane, and then Main Street, would like to give an overview.
Good evening, council. Henry Corbin, Main Street Nevada, and, uh, want to thank you for letting us present this tonight. Um, so we're here tonight seeking your support, uh, for Nevada's application for the twenty-twenty-two challenge grant. A little background on that, the challenge grant, uh, is a hundred thousand dollar matching grant. We have had two successful applications for that in the last few years. Uh, that would be Gatherings, Union Block Copper Spaces, which actually just its final check-off on its grant, so we have completed one. And then the Journal Building Project. So, uh, we've had a really great, uh, track record of these projects, and so a key component of that has been the city's board. And so I want to thank you guys for the support for these past projects. And, uh, with these applications, uh, we've been creating spaces for fostering business growth, fostering growth in existing businesses with copper spaces. And we've also been focusing on cultural district, creating dining and social spaces. And a key component to those is creating living spaces in the downtown, something that earlier in this meeting, we talked about, housing, such a critical thing, creating that healthy system with downtown. And so this project is really tied those together to create housing spaces where people will come for more than just a day to enjoy the downtown, it's a place they call home. And so, the EB Patent Walk, um, most people know it from Brick Town Bakery, uh, it's right on the corner with the mural. Uh, currently, we have a successful business in the first floor, potential for a second business going in on the first floor. But the owners are looking to the second floor, potential for investing into it to create living spaces. So that's really what caught the attention of the review committee, uh, part of this grant was sending it out to all the building owners for an op, option to apply to be applicant for Nevada. And so this project was selected for its competitiveness, uh, creating housing, but also working on the envelope of a very iconic building. And so really being cornered by kind of our downtown square, that intersection of those hot rigs as our town square. And so, uh, really appealed to review committee. So I'm gonna go ahead and hand it over to Paula Feldner, who is one of the building owners, and let her talk a little bit about the project, the building, also their businesses, and kind of what caught their interest.
Good evening. Uh, we, um, have owned this building for a couple of years now, we bought it from Wayne Johnson, he was a photographer here in town, and uh, that's just a really cool story, I became to own this building, but regardless, um, we, we just, we just have a great love for this building, man, boy, the downtown, I'm in Nevada, we have a lot um, hope for the downtown in Nevada, we see a lot of really neat things happening, kind of a trickle effect of people get excited about projects, and that's exciting to us. We, um, have invested a lot in the, of course, the bakery side, into the bakery and get a donut or something, you see, I mean, we invested a lot, so for the last couple of years, we didn't feel ready to apply for this grant because we were in debt. And kind of, it's hard setting up that business, a kitchen, a commercial kitchen is really expensive, and and so, um, and this year they rolled around, and we're like, maybe we're ready, like, we've dug ourselves out of where we were, and, and we are ready. And the upstairs, uh, basically, has always been occupied in our building, but it always hasn't been the best accommodations. And so it was really, really, really low income housing for a lot of years. And, um, when we acquired the building, um, some renters, it was just kind of time to move them, move them on, because we needed to make repairs of the building, there was things that we need to be done. And so the building's been cleared out, except for us, we actually live upstairs in our building, a lot of people don't know that, they say, how long does it take you to get to work? And I'm like, about twenty seconds? That's good and bad, right? Look at your, have your business. I feel like people used to do it in the olden days, and no one really does it anymore, but we do. We live in one apartment, we have a daughter that lives in another apartment, a little grandson across the house, and this is fun. And so it's just been the perfect scenario for our little family right now, to help care for her and where she is in her life, and so we're so, we just feel really grateful. We have, um, gutted the back two apartments, though, and on this, um, document we gave you, Henry, you can see that there's four apartments upstairs. The two big ones to the rear of the building are the ones that are currently empty, and they're big, they're pretty big projects, I mean, they had to be all the, the drywalls out of it, everything's exposed. And so it's a really neat opportunity to go in and modernize those, there's a little bit of renovation to do on the front too, but we're almost, we're almost done with those, we've done those out of pocket, but the, but the back is really where we're concentrating. And so, um, and then we're gonna move to the back, and then we're gonna rent them out to some folks, the right people are gonna live upstairs in the bakery, they can smell donuts at two A M, it's a pretty good smell. Um, I guess, you know, our why is, uh, I feel like there needs to be a little more downtown living, that's part of our why. Um, we could just turn those into two big luxury apartments and just live there ourselves, but there's something really cool about downtown that has somebody. People walk down on the street and they support the businesses that are down there. And, um, even like the elder family, we have to be for our kids, they've actually all moved to town in the last couple of years. Not because Nevada is so, so cool, but Nevada is a great place, it has a really good school, so many things going for Nevada. And so, um, I just think, I just think it's gonna be a good thing, and I think some other building owners will be following soon, I think we'll see more downtown housing happen as well. Um, that's a lot, see, for some of the things here. We're excited about the exterior, um, the tech point in the beginning, we've done some of that so far, but we've gotta work our way around the building. And with this grant, the building would be looking really beautiful, because of the tech pointing that has to happen, the mural has to come off. But we are pretty excited about something new going up there, it's had a mural for so long, it'll probably have something else back on there. Um, let me think here. Also, we're gonna be going back to full-size windows in the building, which will look gorgeous, it deserves full-size windows. And, uh, the ones we have are not, um, very, very tight as well, it's hard to keep the buildings warm, so that'll happen, um. And the building is just gonna be safer after we finish these repairs as well, because the new drywall that's going in upstairs is fire-rated, there's gonna be, um, we planned for heat-activated fire system, so instead of just slow, the heat will activate it. And then a connection with, um, the city as well, they'll have a box where they can get into our building, we do have a large building, front and back doors, but there'll be a box there. And also, I don't know, maybe a fire service that we don't have the call, we just, we live in the building, our grandchildren live in the building, some wonderful people are gonna live in the building with us, so we just wanna keep it safe, so we're excited about that, and a big part of this, Brandon, is actually still rewiring at the upstairs of the building as well. Which has been rewired once, but it is required that. Um, ask me any questions if you can think of.
Listen, if you guys put the re-rig and rest on that, let's hear that, or, well.
Great question. The back staircase is actually, um, kind of a, the design of that makes it really difficult to get in a, a back door, a big tall back door. And also with the new power coming into the building, we actually have to get rid of that staircase, because they, where they're gonna come in the building, they absolutely can't work around that staircase. So the staircase, sale, give me one, that is now, and we're gonna be going to a smaller, more compact, and then we're also ready to be creating a little bit of patio space behind the building, we did build some fencing recently, they created patio space, there's still gonna be parking back there, I think someone was concerned about the parking, there's still gonna be more parking spots behind the building. But I just think it would be, I have my yard, so if I could come down the stairs and have my coffee behind the building or something, so we thought about a green space, because I'm upset about planting some plants back there, but it's really still getting worse, and will just look a whole lot better. A whole lot better, yeah. The whole building is gonna be changing, and I think one of the diagrams shows it, it's gonna be a dark color, it'll probably be the only dark color building on the street, which is kind of fun, I think, so, yeah. Question, any other questions? We just really would appreciate your partnership on this, we, like I said, the last couple of years, we didn't go ready, we feel so ready. We have things lined up, we have, um, estimates all done, chased down estimates, and so we feel like we're working with a lot of really good, some local, a few out of town, but really good vendors to keep the project done, and so. Pretty excited that I might get a new shower. Selfish, I know, so selfish. Anything else I can answer? Yeah, so there's popcorn store down to the front, right? I was like, you know, that's really good. I brought some, but I didn't bring enough for everybody, so I told not to bribe people, so nevermind. That's it. Anything else? Any questions? Thank you for being serious.
See, none, council please vote.
And a new roll call.
Okay, there's a group, takes us to reports, recognize the administrator. All right, uh, last week, we had an intercity visit, I was there for the Marion, Secret Falls, Fort Northern, it was, uh, really fun, they're doing a lot of great things in the community, the downtowns are um, really improved, their alleyways are really fun to go check out, so it was a, a lot of fun, different ideas that we can possibly bring back here to Nevada. I assume Extension, Sandy and I had a meeting with them on Friday, so they were able to come back with us, or come back to us and let us know on some dates that'll work. Uh, starting September twenty-ninth, I believe that's a Thursday. All the Thursdays and Fridays would be available from September twenty-ninth to October, so I will be sending out a, an invite to all of you guys, that way you uh, or actually do it in holdout, where you guys can fill out, and we can figure out which one's gonna work best. They said that, um, probably no more than two sessions. And each session will probably be three.
Um, probably no more than two sessions, and each session will probably be three to four hours, so you could plan on an afternoon type of, type of thing, if that works. Uh, as you can see in, in front of you guys, we have a community talking scheduled for twenty twenty two and twenty three. Uh, you'll see that there's in person, and then zoom, the in person would be for council members, the zoom is going to be for staff numbers. Uh, we're planning on doing some sort of a zoom. Once a month, providing that way we can help inform, you know, a little bit more of some of our, our, uh, plans that we're going through with. The mayor and I also had a meeting with, uh, the chief, and we will be presenting and putting something in front of you guys with what his plans are going forward in the next six months. So, um, that will be on your council meetings, or in your, uh, council information as well, and it will be available the next council meeting. And then the other thing that I was going to discuss is mid-stage, what great it's about to make this and donate it to the city. Uh, and this is something that we're planning on putting back up here. Uh, Joe had a great idea, he was planning on getting the powder, powder coated, and then he was going to have our Nevada green, that lime green color. Uh, find a sticker to put it back so it can pop a little bit. Other than that, aside from my, my report, if you guys have any questions, I'd be more than happy, you'll also see the final revisions for the U T V A to be involved on, or to, or not. During that. I'm planning to burn. I don't have a whole lot to add to what Jordan covered, I'll just echo that the intercity visit, um, is always valuable, and this time we got to see some Iowa community made of. Even a little more relatable, and I think what really stood out to me is things that we had, had in our twenty forty plan, was going and seeing communities that had just accomplished those things. So having people who can ask how they did it, and then get some, some good, because you get to say, what would you have done differently, and they're like, well, here's the mistakes we made. So it's helpful to be able to pick their brains a little bit, so, um, you know, Marion, Cedar Falls, and you've all had really neat things going on, and obviously. Couple of them on different scales than us, but there's still a lot of very, very similar things, and the other thing that stood out is, in all those communities. Um, there were large catalyst-type projects that just kind of started dominoes through, through different areas of town, and I think that's pretty neat to see, because I think we've accomplished some of that. And really got momentum moving in several sectors in the community, so let's need to see kind of where you can keep one in there, so. Um, definitely, you'll be hearing more about some of those things, and Brendan and I were already making long lists of things we need to do, we need to get back and keep the ball moving forward on some of those projects. Um, otherwise, you have any questions for me? And council reports.
We had a Lincoln Highway Days meeting last Friday. Coming up Friday and Saturday, we got Friday nights, dance, ride. Pedal tractor. Oh, we also have the downtown movie for the Camelot. Friday kid. The original, yeah. Is there any other?
Only the best.
I don't remember. They're not worth mentioning here. Uh, Saturday, of course, the Lincoln Highway Day parade, it's at o'clock. All language is the, the celebration down at the fairgrounds until six. Then the rodeo, of course, after that, and then we can handle the period guard after that. Uh, will be shuttles for people that like to have fun. So if you live in town, you can get a shuttle back home. And there'll be shuttles running all around, and. Horse wagons, and a horse wagon running around downtown.
All day rides, all day.
All day rides, yeah. Looking forward to that. Those things look fun there. Oh, and then speaking of, just a quick story, right, I was mentioning other products out of town. When I was on my vacation, I was traveling through, I stopped, just, it was already pretty dust and all, and I stopped at this town, but they just happened to be having their whole downtown tore up. So I picked a restaurant that was closed off in the street, went in, of course. I asked them how the business, ah, it's crazy, this downtown project, and they were like, okay. We're not here.
Oh, yeah. And the council reports? And we'll go back to water.
John Lutley, water superintendent, um, we've just been visiting the well, and had some problems. And I know the motor out, the well sticks, fighting that tomorrow. Um, Charlie Starbuck and Jamie Cleveland, been doing great, couldn't be more proud of them. Uh, they took it upon themselves today to go up and down Lincoln Highway and weeding around in the hikers. Sure many bushes that are going, they've been doing a great job, so they're picking up the plant quick. Uh, develop, rebuild, uh, another line, um, they seem to pick that up quick. Given our daily steps. Do you have any questions? Thanks.
Thank you, Mark.
Here at C, interim wastewater superhead. Or water pollution control. Uh, we had a raw pump, then rainstorm station, Barry went out and we had to pull it in and took it in for, uh, S N repair. The lower motor, I've been using for rebuilding, the motor was fast, we wanted to replace it again with a new one. And, uh, we had been onsite for our annual walkthrough inspection, we're under ground storage tank, and other than that, our daily maintenance operations, he's plenty grown. Thank you.
Thank you. Brendan, do you have anything for any to see?
Not anything, one that wasn't already set.
Karen?
Good for everyone. Yeah. I was just mainly about audits, um, the auditors, state auditors are here tomorrow, beginning tomorrow for the F Y twenty two. And I did hear this morning from, uh, the other ones, we do have us, we have assigned a different ones than we do for twenty one, but the twenty one is supposed to be done this week, so I'm hoping for that. Um, the I M W C A audit, I just sent out, and all the people work for that, so like that'll be done for twenty two, so that's mainly what we've been doing.
Hello, uh, for the library, I finished, uh, some of our reporting for the year, and, uh, in October, we have to report all of our statistics for the year, uh, to that stage. And, uh, at least the initial look at the numbers, our circulation increased by forty four percent, um, over twenty twenty one. Um, so we're really excited to see, we're kind of climbing out of that hole from being closed. Uh, we are, I'm currently working on a Story County Community Foundation grant, uh, to try to get a story walk to our trails. Um, if you've been to Huxley along the part of Iowa Trail, or the Greenbelt Trail in Clive, they've got, um. Permanent signage that you can intersperse different pages of picture books in to create a little walk where kids and families can enjoy a story. And I had applied for a grant last summer for the same thing, uh, and we didn't get it, so we're trying again with Story County Community Foundation. And hoping to kind of partner up with Parks and Rec to find a good spot on our awesome trail system for it. And then with Lincoln Highway Days coming, we actually have two displays right now in the library, um, one is our normal display case, and we've got a lot of the, um. We've got a lot of belt buckles, and some other Lincoln Highway signage and Lincoln Highway Day stuff in there. And then we were approached, um, by an organization who has a interactive audio visual display. Um, highlighting the importance of the Lincoln Highway to communities in Iowa. And so that was going in right as I left the building to come to this meeting, and that display will be in the library kind of by a coffee counter. Um, through the, until I believe September thirty, so. Any questions or anything? Thank you.
Thank you for your support tonight of our purchase, our use of equipment, appreciate that, we put it to good use. Um, just a few things going on, Fieldhouse Project, uh, is moving along, um, water sanitary sewers once were worked, it's been going on, I thought, about the last week and a half. And it'll start now with, uh, putting footings on the south side and southwest angle of the building, so they can bring in, uh. Other equipment they're gonna need, and they'll start on the interior, that's very almost deal on that side of the building, so, uh, moving along, um, well with that, guys, construction meeting this week, so. Uh, we wrapped up the season yesterday, um, we had a good, weird, um, mechanically and, and pretty, pretty well. Uh, we do have some maintenance work we'll be doing this fall, so there's obviously a lot that goes on, but otherwise, we've shifted, uh, programming life from summer and more than fall, and which of the activities is best, so. If you have any questions, if you have. Thank you. I'm good, unless you guys have questions.
I just wanted to mention that Officer Longfellow, he graduated Friday from I L E A, so he's starting steel training now, uh, right now, he's with Officer Bailey, and. I think Boris will be there, and he'll rotate to additional officers, so we'll be seeing him now.
I've been out a little bit, back, back to the sleeping.
Very.
I have nothing for the group report, who will get a, or report on all the projects at the next test.
Aaron, 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 so.
No, I'm using, I'm here for the sleeping picture.
Council, anything else, or will be adjourned? Will be adjourned.
Sorry.
Me, Jason, all of them there.
I'm.
My advice. And we're here.